Call the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, August 12th, 2014 to order. May we staff and pledge allegiance?
I am the United States of America, and the United Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every breathing justice for all.
Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Kuziyak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. We're all here. First item is consideration of the following minutes, the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, July 8th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
There, I move the minutes of the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, July 8th, 2014. The approved as recommended.
Do I have a second?
A second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is consideration of the July 2014 dispersment report. Amy?
Payroll on accounts payable was provided to all of you prior to the meeting for July. Payroll was $91,436.20. Accounts payable was $3,287,802.7. Of that, $2,931,194.59 was payable on tax liabilities.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the July distribution report be approved as listed.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziyak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is public discussion, items not on the agenda, since I spent more time with a shop vac than I've ever spent in my life, just today. Thought we'd just go off for a few comments from our city manager, just about the water situation that we've had.
Yeah, so it's been an interesting 24 hours here in Pleasant Ridge, but all things considered, we fared better than pretty much all or most of our neighboring communities, I would say. The damage was mostly limited to southeast Oakland County. Macomb County had quite a bit of damage and some parts of Wayne as well, but in Oakland County is really the southeast quadrant here. We escaped relatively unscathed in terms of fires, of road washouts. We didn't really have any of that, but a lot of the other communities have been dealing with them. They're serious and will be ongoing problems. Lot of basement flooding, limited to certain streets, which we're starting to figure out which streets had most of the problems and which ones escaped. My street was one of the ones that had problems, so also getting to know the shop vac. So, we do know it was a system-wide problem. It wasn't specific to Pleasant Ridge. It was just a fact of the matter that we had a 100-year storm, where we had four to six inches of rain that fell, and the system just simply isn't designed to handle that kind of volume in that short of a time. So, it wasn't just Pleasant Ridge backing up, it wasn't just our infrastructure. It was Ferndale, it was Berkeley, it was Huntington Woods, it was Oak Park, it was Hazel Park, it was Madison Heights. Everybody had these basement backups, everybody suffered from it. So, there's really nothing that we could have done, there's really nothing that was wrong with our system, there's just too much rain, not enough volume. And then what happened is, it starts backing up because the volume got too big in the system. And sadly, that's why we have the restrictors on our sewer grates, so that during intense and heavy bursts of rain, we don't overtax our system to cause it to back up into the basement. So, if anyone wonders why we have those restricted grates on our manhole inlets, this is exactly why. Moving forward, it's business as usual here in Pleasant Ridge. We had some wet carpets in City Hall, but by and large, all of our computer systems and everything stayed up. Ferndale had basement flooding in their City Hall, it was pretty bad. They just finished renovations for their police in the basement of City Hall, and all their 911 servers, all of their computer systems down in the basement, and they were all outlasted. So, Ferndale's emergency dispatch was being routed through Hazel Park, because they were completely down, so they've got a real mess down there. So, you know, I think we should be thankful that we dodged really the worst of this thing. Moving forward, trash pickup will be as normal this Friday for all of those, all those of you with flood-damaged items. You can drag those onto your curb at any time, and we're not going to ticket you for putting your flood damage items out by the curb. Our garbage, our trash hauler will pick them up as long as they meet our regular requirements. So, 35-gallon maximum bag size. I bought the 55-gallon contractor bags and then realized that they're too big, so I've got an issue. But, wet carpet needs to be cut into four-foot sections, maximum weight of 40 pounds, so you're going to have to cut all your wet, sopping, gross carpet off. Have fun with that, I've already done that. Any appliances or anything like that, you need to take the doors off of them before you put them out at the curb, and those are really the major restrictions. So, make sure you stay in line with those, and they should take, they will take your garbage away. We're also going to be doing a special pickup early next week. We don't know the date yet, because our garbage hauler is scrambling, trying to find crews for our regular pickup for Friday, so they can't commit to what day it's going to be early next week, but once we know, we'll update the website, it's right on the homepage, pleasantridge.org, and that'll be the second special pickup early next week. So, if you're dealing with insurance appraisers and you can't get rid of stuff yet, or if you just can't get to it till this weekend, go ahead and drag it on out there, and we'll get it next Monday or Tuesday, or maybe Wednesday, but hopefully Monday or Tuesday. So, that's really the summary on the update for where we stand at this point, just trying to dry out.
Since that wasn't on the agenda, if there's anybody that has, what's to talk about storm or water backups or anything?
Oh, you know, there is one thing I should add, actually, about water backups. We have gotten the question a lot about, is the city going to pay for any of this, any of this water backup in the basement? That's maybe the most important thing that I forgot to mention. That all goes through our insurance carrier, and there is state law which establishes basically a four-part test for whether or not the city will be liable for those, and the insurance carrier is going to make that determination. The state law says that we have to own and operate the sewage disposal system that allegedly caused damage or injury. Well, yes, we did. The sewage disposal system for the city had to have a construction, design, maintenance, operation, or repair defect, so it's going to be finding that there is something wrong with our system, that the city that we knew, or in the exercise of reasonable diligence, should have known about the defect and failed to take reasonable steps in a reasonable amount of time to repair and correct or remedy the defect, and that the defect must be 50% or more of the cause of the event and the damage or injury. So, if you want to file a claim, we have the paperwork. Contact the city, and we'll mail it to you. We will mail it to you, because by law, there's a 45-day period, so we need to mail you a letter with the date on it to start that clock. We can't just put it on the website for you to download the forms, because we need that clock to start. At that point, you'll fill out the forms, and we'll turn it over to our insurance carrier. But, even as one with significant basement damage, I wouldn't be optimistic about having an insurance payout from the city on this, given the, given the facts of the situation we had yesterday. But, that's just my opinion. Submit your form if you want to take a shot at it.
Some mayor question for Jim. Jim, the restrictors that you mentioned, are those factored into the design of the drain system, the coon drain system? Is that everyone is supposed to be using them?
You know, that's a good question, I don't know, because I know Berkeley has even more restrictive restrictors than we do. They have two little holes, we have six. Ferndale has wide-open grates, so there doesn't seem to be much consistency across the system. I think it's probably just a localized solution where we do that to prevent it from getting over-pressurized in our part of the system, because these all feed in from different places, you know, to the main line. So, depending on what branch you're on, you know, from getting to the interceptor can change the equation, but I don't know specifically if that's a system-wide design issue.
Yeah, I just kind of ask, because I wonder if some communities are using them, some aren't, or the ones that are not using it, helping to exacerbate the problem, but probably nobody knows at this point.
Yeah. That's a big engineering problem.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other items for public discussion?
Shall we just, are you on the? Oh, did you ask?
I have a quick question.
Hello? Fairwood Robb, 8 Fairwood. Does anybody have an update on the cork patio, because?
Yes, I do. So, the cork patio, I was exchanging emails with Kelly today, and it sounds like they're starting very soon with the construction, and are still planning to have it done in the next, you know, couple, few weeks.
So, there's no city holes that's done?
They, no, not generally. They submitted an application for a sun sail canopy that would go over the patio, which wasn't on any of the approved items, but it didn't need to be. We can approve that on its own merit, but we had some, we had some questions about how that was going to work and how it was going to look, but that's just holding up the sunshade. They obviously have to build the patio, the fence and everything first, so.
All right, as long as we're moving forward.
We're moving forward.
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Gail Girdon, 54 Ridge. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. This will be quick, I hope. I'm speaking on behalf of the environment tonight. Mr. Mayor Metzger, you probably got a couple of my letters. In 2011, the EPA estimated that 870 million pounds of pesticides are used annually in the United States. 102 million pounds of those pesticides are used in lawn and garden fertilizers by homeowners. Herbicides are the most widely-used type of pesticide. They're a single, they are the single largest component of fertilizer/pesticide/herbicide mix annually poured on our lawns. The herbicide 2-4D, also known as Agent Orange, is one of the most frequently-used active ingredients. 2-4D has a half-life of 10 days, once applied in a lawn fertilizer and up to months or even years, once tracked indoors onto our carpets by shoes and pet paws, or by being carried in by dust particles. The EPA has found that residues from outdoor pesticides tracked indoors can increase the pesticide loads in our carpet dust as much as 400 times. None of these seems worth the risk to get rid of your dandelions in your yard. The health risk of synthetic pesticides have been known for decades. Infants and children are especially sensitive to these risks. Studies have linked herbicide exposure to cancers of the colon, lung, nose, prostate, ovary, as well as to leukemia and multiple myeloma. Occupational exposure to herbicides suffered by agricultural workers and those who spray our yards have been known to lead to increased risk of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. The National Coalition for Pesticide-Free Lands reports that of the 30 commonly-used lawn pesticides, 19 are linked with cancer, 13 are linked with birth defects, 21 with reproductive system problems, 28 with liver or kidney damage, 13 with birth defects, I read that, excuse me, 15 with neurotoxicity, and 11 with the disruption of the endocrine or hormonal system. Pesticides have recently been linked to ADHD in children. None of these risks seems worth it to rid one yard of dandelions. The dangerous effects of pesticides on the environment continue. As people water the lawns and after it rains, as we've experienced the last couple of days, the nitrogen and phosphorus used in lawn fertilizers seeps into our water system and into the storm runoff, and then is carried into the nearest storm drain, and then on into our rivers, lakes, and streams. Too many of these nutrients can cause water to have algae grow in the water. Just last week, over 400,000 people down in Monroe were without water for days because their water supply was contaminated, excuse me, by the algae growth in Lake Erie. I believe the effect of this, the cause of this problem is still being researched, and while manure and the summer heat were contributing factors, experts have reported that fertilizers used in agricultural and lawn applications were a major contributor to the problem. Not surprisingly, it's been found that pets can be at extreme risk from herbicides. The National Cancer Institute study has found that dogs are two times more likely to develop lymphoma if their owners use herbicides on their lawns four or more times a year. The National Journal of Veterinary Medicine recommends that pet owners do not allow their pets to ever, ever walk on, roll on, play on, or in general do anything on lawns where pesticides are in use. None of these risks seems worth it to rid one yard of dandelions. Grass wants to grow, but it needs a healthy environment. Just like our food sources are no longer providing our bodies with a proper balance of nutrients, so we have to take supplements and probiotics to make everything work properly. The chemicals in lawn fertilizers strip the soil of proper nutrients to support a healthy growing environment. Soil lawns have become drug-dependent on the chemicals in fertilizers. There's a theme here, none of these risks seems worth it to rid one yard of dandelions. The environmental movement is huge throughout the rest of the world. In 2007, Alberta, Canada outlawed the use of herbicide fertilizer lawn care mixtures, that's a mouthful. Nova Scotia passed a law restricting cosmetic pesticide use back in 2003. Quebec has passed a ban that helped cut pesticide use by 50%. The British Columbia provincial government is considering a similar ban. The country of Ecuador has provided Mother Earth with constitutional rights, and the entire continent of Europe has banned pesticides that can harm these. We get caught up in our everyday lives and often do not take the time to consider the impact of our actions. We seem willing to accept certain things as the norm until someone brings it to their attention that these things just might be harmful to the health and to their environment. Over the last six decades, we have seen DDT, gas-guzzling cars, and our own food sources most recently, the height of the environmental controversy. Did you know that when you eat a non-organic apple, it could be sprayed with as many as 30 different pesticides, and all of the chemicals that go with those pesticides? We scramble to fix our mistakes, yet long after the harm has been done, we still feel the effect of the actions that have gone unattended. None of these risks seems worth it to rid one yard of dandelions. However compelling this information may be, pesticides are very, very dangerous. This is, there is much more that could and should be discussed, and I'm asking the commission and the mayor to consider banning pesticides in Pleasant Ridge, but the final decision as to whether to do that lies within this governing body. If you would be willing to accept the real possibility of banning pesticides in Pleasant Ridge, there are many ways to make the, almost, almost a painless transition. Some suggestions might be to provide a two-year timeframe for citizens to make the change over. During that time, provide informational seminars on the dozens, probably hundreds, of organic options to chemical lawn fertilizers. I noticed that you are going to have one on composting coming up soon, that's awesome, thank you. We could join with the surrounding communities of Ferndale, Huntington Woods, Berkeley, Oak Park, and so on, to maybe start an environmental action committee, and maybe have the entire area pesticide-free within a few years. Ferndale has already started an environmental sustainability commission. They meet on Monday nights in Ferndale, the first Monday of the month. While chemical-free lawns are just part of the bigger puzzle, it is a small step that can have a huge impact. I'm sure that once we begin this journey, it will open up so many more environmentally safe options, and that someday, we may find ourselves a model for change, maybe even for the whole county, but why stop there? I'm very committed to this issue, and this is, I hope this is not the last time the discussion will take place. The last thing I want to do this evening is to invite everyone here, and whoever might be watching, to do your own research about pesticides. The evidence regarding the dangers of pesticides is powerful and irrefutable. None of these risks seems worth it to rid your lawn of dandelions. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them, otherwise, thank you for your time.
Are there any other, any other items for public discussion? This is something that we will continue to talk about.
Thank you.
Definitely.
An available card.
Okay, great.
If you need to call. And I have lots and lots of resources.
Oh, good, good.
Lots of them.
There are a lot, I know there are a lot of sympathetic voices in Pleasant Ridge.
I have two sitting next to me.
There are a lot more. Okay, the next item is consideration. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Did you want to?
Oh, okay.
We know you, but.
Mylel Yulinski, 30 Wellesley. My question was, does this require a vote of, of the whole community, or can you amongst you decide this? I don't know.
Can I have a ban on pesticides?
Yes, yes.
Well, depends on how you want to approach it. You know, there's, there's everything from advocate, well, there's do nothing, and then there's advocacy, and then there's all the way up to passing an ordinance, basically. If we want to try to apply this to the entire community, we'd have to pass an ordinance. So, in that case, there would be a public hearing, there would be all the standard ordinance processes and procedures. Something like this would probably, you know, warrant some extra discussion beyond just a public hearing here.
But, not only what we require of our residents, but what the city does on its own practice.
That's right, so yeah, and that could fall somewhere on the advocacy to ordinance requirement, as if we wanted to step up and look at doing things differently for the city, you know, we'd have to look into that, but that could be somewhere on the inspector.
Thank you.
Any other?
Thank you. Stacy Stutcher, 85 Amherst. I have a question. I imagine you've all noticed the trees on Indiana, the pear trees. Have we looked into that?
We have, they have a disease, they have a wilt. And so, basically, they're going to drop their leaves and then re-leaf over and over and over again, and it doesn't look great. The alternative is to cut them down. There's really no treatment for what the disease that they have, so it's kind of live with it or cut them down, and we can't replace them right now, so it's kind of too bad.
I have the same problem in my yard on five pear trees, and I took the leaves to English Garden, and they said it was a condition called rust.
Yeah, same thing.
And I noticed new leaves coming out. Old leaves are blackened and dropping, but the new leaves are leafing out, so I would hesitate, I would hesitate to scramble, and they did give me some kind of probably terrible thing. I haven't done it yet, but.
How did she take on?
Now I'm thinking, maybe borax or something like that. Ivory soap. Maybe ivory soap will work, but I was wondering, because they're looking worse all the time. But, I, I'm, I have a philosophy in my own yard. If something doesn't look like it should, I give it one year, a total 12 months to recover, and if it does recover, fine, if it doesn't, then I consider dealing with it. And I've, I've usually been very fortunate.
Once we, once we can replace trees that we cut down, those will certainly be on our to-do list.
Well, maybe they'll, maybe they'll surprise us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question for Ms. Girdon. I wonder if you might be able to leave your email address before you go?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other items? The next item is consideration of the governmental reports. I don't want to pull rank, but I noticed that we do have our new superintendent, and maybe we should start there. Karen doing the intros or anything?
Oh, I'm just audience.
Oh, are you? I thought you kind of came with the.
Good evening. My name is Blake Perd, I'm the new superintendent of Ferndale Schools. Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself and give the update of what's going on with Ferndale Schools, and I know that Karen is looking forward to giving the, you know, the update, because Nan is out with the marching band up at Interlochen, but Karen has graciously let me, you know, be up here tonight. So, we're, we have schools starting here, oh, in about a month, as you've talked about earlier in the, you know, the great flood of '14 now. We have four buildings that have new water features, so via Mother Nature, so we, you know, our high school, we're looking at now having a lazy river in the basement. So, we've had a little bit of damage in a couple of the buildings, nothing that's going to stop us from opening on time, or that's going to affect instruction, just some cleanup that we're going to have to do. Actually, the greater issue is, we had an administrative retreat yesterday in downtown Detroit, and then we were pretty much all stuck in downtown Detroit. Our head of facilities actually slept in her car in the lodge, I believe, as we were calling back and forth all night long, trying to get updated of the buildings. So, everything will come off by hitch. We have, we're in the next phase of our bond issue. We have almost all our work that's being finished up at the high school, as well as the other buildings. I know that Pleasant Ridge has been doing a little bit of road construction, so we've, you know, been letting residents use the Roosevelt parking lot in the interim, and luckily, construction's done in that building, so, you know, we've been able to facilitate that, which has been good. Our high school is starting a new honors program this year, which has been a highly selective program. I think we had about 60 students that had put in for that program. Our enrollment at this point, if you've been looking around town, you'll see the new enrollment signs. We have our, our open enrollment window at the moment, so enrollment has been going well. I think we've had more signs canvassed within, you know, the different parts of the different cities than in the past. You'll see on Facebook, actually, you'll see a picture of Karen and myself out in Oak Park, talking to some students and doing some recruitment work. We have a whole new central office staff at Harding. Excuse me. Too much talking all day long. But, we have Tom Shelton, who's the new assistant superintendent of HR. We also have Deana Rusholo, who is from Roosevelt, who we've moved up to be assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, and Diana Keefe, who is a teacher at Roosevelt, has been moved into the principalship there. So, we're very happy about the new administrative team and the new people coming into place, as well as supporting the staff that has already been here and moving them up into different positions. So, we're going to be looking a lot this year as what do we want Ferndale Schools to be? We already know that we have a gem in our school district, but what's the next step? What are we about? And kind of the vision that we've been working on as administrative team is, you know, first off, it's achievement for all, it's for all students, but more importantly, we want to help students be able to know what they want to be, what their dream is, and then how do we make sure, as a school district, that we help students not only be ready, but be able to live that dream after they graduate? I know probably when all of us went to school, you pretty much had your standard curriculum, and if you had an idea of what you wanted to do, you know, after high school, you could sort of figure it out, but if you're like 75% of the population, you don't know what you want to do. You normally go through seven majors, and for any of us that are parents, you pray your child leaves in four years. Your bank account prays they leave in four years, but the average student is in anywhere from six to seven years in college. We also know that students that have, you know, degrees past high school make more money than students that do not, and so we need to make sure that we are providing students an education, that they can live whatever dream that they have regardless of their background, and that they have a path. And when I talk to seniors, when they graduate, I want to be able to go, so what do you want to do? What are you looking to do? Oh, I'm, this is my path moving forward, instead of, I don't know. Too often in education, we get the "I don't know." And kind of my vision for Ferndale Schools and the vision of the administrative team is, we want to make sure every student has a path, every student has a goal, and then how do we make sure that they can live that goal? And part of that, for me personally, is also pushing students. You know, it's the old thing of, you know, when a student says, well, you know, I want to be a professional athlete. Okay, well, once you tear your ACL, then, you know, what's, what's the backup? You happen to be really good in math, let's talk about all the great things you can, you know, you can do in math besides counting cards, that's a whole different area. But, you know, helping students find their dream, and I think of one student I had in my career who was a great linebacker at high school, and very, very intelligent kid, but didn't really have any path. Eventually, kind of got him looking in different ways, and he played for Central and got into sports medicine. He's now a trainer for the Ravens. And, you know, that And, you know, that was because we were able to help him find a path that kind of fit his dream, what he liked to do, his skills. But it also pushed him. He never saw himself in that role. And now he's, you know, in a role that now he can go tell other kids, you know, look what I could do. You can do this. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And how do we do that? We do that a lot already in Ferndale Schools. But how do we take it, you know, how do we continue to take that to the next generation? How do we make sure that all students K-12 have those opportunities? So that we can ensure that every graduate has a path and that every student along the way is learning and knows what they want and that we can ensure that. So it's kind of our starting point as we evaluate, you know, what works well and what do we need to do moving forward. So it's kind of our short synopsis of where we're at in, you know, in our current water world in our basements. But I have to go home and watch the movie again, even though it wasn't that good the first time. Don't put yourself through that. Just any question for myself about what's going on with the schools?
I have one question. I thought it's always somewhat difficult to come in to a position after a strategic plan has been developed in advance of your arrival. While I commend the board and I thought it was a terrific strategic plan, it's a terrific process that they went through. I just wondered how, did you adopt the strategic plan? Will you be looking at that to kind of craft it in your own...
I mean, that really is our guiding document at the moment. So as we looked at yesterday as administrative team, you know, what kind of are our goals? That starts with the strategic plan. You know, there are nine, nine goals of the board. And when I look at those, there are nine goals of the community. So how do we start putting those together? We have those goals. We have our accreditation goals that every school district has to have. You have five, what's called advanced ed standards that every school district has to meet. And then we have what's called a district improvement plan. That's something that every school district does with the state. So all those have to match each other. So that was part of our day yesterday, taking our overall goals. How do these match? So eventually, there'll be a document for every teacher, everyone in the school district. Here's how our goals for the year and what we're implementing matches our strategic plan, our accreditation, something that's called professional learning communities, which is really your core questions of education. What do I want the students to learn? How do I teach it? How do I prove that they know it? What do I do if they don't know it? And then what do I do if they've already learned it and I need to move them forward? So all of it has to match. And so we've kind of already developed a template of how all this links together and what pieces of the strategic plan, you know, that are going to be relatively easy to move forward and that are part of what we're already doing. And we just need to kind of show how we're doing that. And then what pieces of the strategic plan this year, we need to plan. And that we need to take the time to go, okay, how does this one really work well? So and part of my job as a superintendent is report back to the board how the district is doing on the plan. So that, and, you know, that'll be part of my evaluation as a superintendent. You know, how is that strategic plan moving forward? Because that is a document that the community came together to work on. It's not the superintendent's documents, the community's document. It's my job to put that into place. Any other questions?
I would just like to thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, my pleasure.
I know I've been able to meet you at the school board meetings, but not everyone has had a chance to, you know, at this ice cream social, I know you were there too.
Yep.
Not everybody was there.
I didn't get any ice cream. I was a little upset by that.
No ice cream?
No, I talked too much. I got...
They didn't let you, right?
He was in the bouncy house.
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay.
I was looking for the ball pit, but I didn't see it anywhere. I was upset by that.
So just thank you for coming tonight. I think it's very valuable that we all hear from you and get to meet you like we did today.
A pleasure. And any collaboration that we can do between Pleasant Ridge and the schools, always looking to do collaboration because, you know, we're successful together.
Great.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commission. I can give you a brief update. City manager did an eloquent job of what happened up here. Ferndale did get hit hard. Hazel Park got hit worse. And the more east it went, the worse it got. We did reach water levels up to six to eight feet deep. One lady did die in north of here, trapped in her car. And I found her body after the water receded. Couldn't get out of the vehicle on time. So we did have a lot of rescues going down 696, I-75. People were standing on top of their cars with water up to their calves. So their cars were burying. And then we had multiple cars floating down streets, which is the first time in my 30 years I've seen cars floating down side streets in this metropolitan area. We're not in a floodplain, but I think Jim did a good job. The sewers could not take that amount. It was six and a half inches in less than two hours. The water at Ferndale City Hall was coming out of the toilets, two and a half feet tall, like giant bidets. But it wasn't clean water. So the flooding was backing up in all the sewer systems. Older communities have mixed Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Huntington Woods. We have storm slash sewer systems all together. Other newer communities put sewer systems in and storm sewers in. And the storm sewers all run into like the 12-town drain and all that. And when you put that much water in, these things fill up. They're like raging rivers. If anyone were to fall in there, you're gone. You're not going to make it out alive because the water's moving 30, 40 miles an hour. It's quite a bit of water down under there. So when it hit, it pressurized, came up all the drains and was back feeding everywhere. One of the things I do want to say is a safety concern, is I don't know if it happened here, but a lot of people got flooding in their basements would go down to see if they could undo their drains. That is a big mistake unless you shut your power up. They call us and we'll pull your meter in the back of your house. Because if you go down in the water, everyone says, oh, no, no. Chief, my plugs are up four feet. Yeah, but your washer, dryer, and anything else plugged in that's down low is going to short out and you're going to walk into the water. And we've had, not this time round, but we've had people killed by the electrical current. So that's a caution. Water carries electricity. Also had wires down in certain areas. And the current will carry through all the water, wherever it's running. That water will be energized. So that was a problem we had, keeping people safe. We did activate the CERT team, which a couple Pleasant Ridge residents are members of. We had 18 CERT people and about 16 firefighters on duty. And we handled just about everything they were throwing at us in a fairly efficient manner. So I did call the county and set up the emergency operations committee at Oakland County, which no one had done to date. But apparently, the south end of Oakland County is not as important. No, everybody was too busy to really get the call out and they hadn't set up yet. And I said, well, I've got the waters floating cars onto the rail tracks. I have Canadian National on the international dispatch on the phone. And I'm shutting down the rail line from Pontiac to Detroit. And the guy said, it's that bad? That's a decision over my head. I said, well, I suggest you get the person over your head and tell them to call me. So we did get everything shut down. The rails shut down. And it looked like we got everything under control. We didn't have a lot of calls in Pleasant Ridge. There was some flooding in that. But we did sweep the neighborhood a couple of times to see if there was anything going on that someone might have missed, any sinkholes starting or any streets going under. And it was looking good, although some idiot went down. And buried a truck in what he thought was a street. And he did a really good job of it. So I saw that. That was entertaining. That was rather entertaining. I thought, really? You just hit the accelerator and think that'll create a road? So then this morning, I thought I'd get a few hours sleep, which was about two and a half, when they called again. The Reichold Treatment Plant had caught fire. It was not a big deal. It was an electrical fire. The outside of the building, plastics and electrical cabling, that caught fire. The chemicals they keep in that plant in the separate building were never on fire or charged. There was no hazardous runoff. We contained everything and extinguished the fire. And we have the people that run it there and they'll be moving to repair the facility and get it right back up and running. And I did, I did talk to Jim on that one. So we kept everything moving and it was fairly six and a half inches in less than two hours.
It's a lot of water.
It is.
So everything went well. I can answer any questions if anybody had anything. Traffic was a big problem because they shut down 75, 696, eight-mile road, all the underpasses. But I will tell you, the underpass at 696 and Woodward never filled up.
No way.
It got water, but the pumps worked. I mean, other underpasses that aren't 40 feet below grade had cars buried in water. We didn't have, that baby stayed open. I parked on top several times and looked down in there going, oh, this is good. I'm not going to have people drowning. I don't have the scuba team ready. So no, we did really well. We did well that way. So it was a good, it was a crazy day.
Thank you for all...
No problem.
You're going to get some sleep.
Eventually. Still, there's still a few things cooking. Our 911 center was taken out. That happened right before our council meeting and they were in closed session with the lawyer. And I pounded on the door and said, ladies and gentlemen, chief, we're in closed session. I said, no, you're being evacuated. This building has become a life safety hazard. Are you kidding? And they all came out, looked in the basement as the water shot out like a wave under the door from the police basement. I said...
Yeah, there you go.
And then the lights went, and they went, okay, we're done. Call, put it on the internet. We're not having a council meeting. Nope, we're done. We're out of here. So yeah, it moved fast. It hit fast. It hit hard. But nothing you can do about it. And I think Jim covered that really well. There's nothing anybody's going to do. A storm surge is going to push. It's going to pressurize. Once the rain quits, it takes about two and a half to three hours. And unless you have major blockages somewhere, it just recedes and goes right back to normal. It worked. Everything was okay.
I feel so much better.
I want to come here more often than ever.
I thought we'd clap for you every time, don't we? Something's...
Okay, no other governmental reports? All right. Next item, consideration of city commission liaison reports. First up, Commissioner Crzyak with Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few dates I'd like to remind residents of. The Synchro Show is going to be tomorrow, Wednesday, August 13th, at the PR pool. That'll be 6:30. That's always a lot of fun. An upcoming, another pool event, we will have 50-plus poolside bingo on August 28th at the pool. That'll kick off at 6:30. That'll also coincide with our second adult pool night at the PR pool. I know some of my distinguished colleagues participated in the first adult pool night and I'm sure they would like to see everyone out for that event.
It was a great time.
It's a good time. Another event we have coming up for the kids, the Recreation Commission will be hosting a chalk event. It's scheduled for August 19th, 6:30 in Memorial Park. And the thought behind this was a good opportunity to distribute some chalk to the budding artists throughout the community and let them improve the look of Memorial Park. Currently, Memorial Park is underwater. So if August 19th comes around and we need a drier spot, we'll move it over to Stevenson for some dry sidewalk. Because of the torrential downpour yesterday, we had a playground meeting scheduled with the Recreation Commission and residents to help choose playground equipment for Gainesboro Park. I'd like to remind residents that this was funding made available by the Pleasant Ridge Foundation and the Recreation Commission were entrusted to select equipment for five and unders for Gainesboro Park. We had a representative from Landscape Structures, which will be the vendor, who will provide the equipment. Because of the rain, obviously, it was, it was not going to take place yesterday. We have yet to reschedule that. We will. And when we do, I'm sure we can send out an eBlast and make that known and invite anyone who's interested to come and help pick the equipment for Gainesboro Park. And then at the end of the month, last Wednesday, always the recreation meeting, I would invite anyone who's interested in Gainesboro Park developments or the pool season or any other recreation-related items to join us. That's always the last Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM at Four Ridge. And finally, I'd like to ask residents if you have any large cardboard boxes that aren't saturated with sewer water? We're accepting donations for our box castle build, which will be in September. This was a fun event last year when we got a bunch of refrigerator boxes, washing machine boxes, other cardboard boxes and allowed the children to help construct a cardboard castle. So once things dry out and you look in your garage or basement or you have a new refrigerator or a new washer and dryer that, you know, the insurance company determines that you need to have in your basement, please consider donating the box that it came in to the Recreation Commission. We'll gladly come pick it up. Please email Scott or myself and we'll come and get it for you. And let the kids use their imagination to build something spectacular in September. So that's all I have.
Mayor, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Foreman, committee liaison.
Yes, I don't have a whole lot of content this month since our superintendent was here tonight. But I do have one thing I'd like to mention. Tomorrow, there was an event planned at Gainesboro Park. It was for new families, incoming families for John F. Kennedy Elementary School of all grades to come, just kind of interact, meet each other, meet other families that are already in the schools. And that will be canceled. That's going to be rescheduled to August 20th. I don't have the time, but I will get that and I'll post it on Facebook and see if we can get it in an eBlast, if we have one coming out soon. But it'll be August 20th at Gainesboro Park. And the purpose will be just to meet other families in the school. So it's canceled for tomorrow. And that is the extent of my update.
Commissioner Perry, planning and DDA.
Thank you. The Planning Commission and DDA met on July 15th. And in this meeting, as Fairwood Rob mentioned, the Planning Commission voted to approve Cork's patio plan for outdoor dining. And the patio runs along the Woodward side of the building, south of their front door. And they plan to start construction soon and will have it ready this summer. And then the Planning Commission also voted to send the current draft of the master plan forward to the City Commission to approve for further distribution and a review process that will be discussed by the city manager later in tonight's agenda. And the full Planning Commission also began discussions regarding accessory dwelling units. And they're going to hold a workshop to explore this further. The public is welcome at the workshop. And we will keep you informed on the date, time, and location of the workshop. The DDA approved funds for the two alley projects between the 696 Service Drive and Kensington, and then Kensington through Devonshire. And the hope is that these alley projects will coordinate with the redevelopment of the building and parking lots of the building formerly known as MBS or AAA, which is 24280 Woodward Avenue. And the next Planning Commission and DDA meeting will be held on August 25th, I believe, at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. I hope you'll join us. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A quick question for Commissioner Perry. Just for any residents that may not be familiar with the term accessory dwelling unit, could you let us know what that is?
I'll let the city manager explain it more clearly.
Smart move. An accessory dwelling unit is what it sounds like. It's a second dwelling unit on one property. So this can take a couple of different forms. Sometimes, I don't know if you watch Income Property on HGTV, the Canadian guy?
Scott.
Yeah. Scott. You know, he builds basement apartments. That's an accessory dwelling. Or it could be a dwelling unit that's above a garage or takes up the entire garage and converts it to a second dwelling unit. Our ordinances are not, I guess I would say, not entirely clear on whether or not we permit them. We do permit garages which are large enough to easily accommodate a accessory dwelling unit. And so in the past couple of years, we had a number of requests where people wanted to put in a bathroom and a kitchen and a bonus room above or, you know, as part of their garage. And so it begs the question a lot, you know, is that accessory dwelling at that point can easily be converted to one one day? So that began a process where the Planning Commission has been looking at regulations. Accessory dwelling units are good because they, you know, increase housing choices in the community. They're a second source of income for a property owner. It can allow in-laws or elderly parents to look back in with their children for, you[1792.33] know, ease of care. And the bad, because they can generate extra parking, you know, it can create rental situations in a permanently single-family owner-occupied context. It can increase density, you know, traffic, all of those things. So, you know, there's good and bad. It really is a choice on whether or not we want to allow those or not. So, you know, we can still allow people to have the bonus room over the garage, but just making sure that it won't be a dwelling unit. There's a lot of different ways and a lot of different towns handle this. You know, Berkeley allows you to have sinks and bathrooms, but they don't allow you to have kitchen facilities. Royal Oak prohibits you from putting a combination of utilities that could easily be converted to an accessory dwelling unit. So, you know, what that means administratively for them is, well, they're Royal Oak, so they just do it. But, that's usually their MO. But, you know, it could just mean no gas.
Sneak into my life.
But you could have, you know, electric and water. I'm not exactly sure on that, but that's what their ordinance says. So, we have some work to do on that, on which way we're going to go. And like I say, it is a choice. You know, it's not something where there's a real clear-cut answer. So, that's why sometime through the process, and it may not be imminently, but we will workshop those to bring this to the attention of the community at large. Because this could have real impacts on, you know, what goes on next door to you. Or you could build one for yourself and you might love it. But, you know, this one will be fun.
And several of the communities around us don't have them, don't allow them also, right?
Most communities prohibit them. Royal Oak has very stringent controls in place where they'll allow them.
Do they have a relative issue?
Yeah, they try to regulate it to a family member and then it has to be part of the main house. And then whenever that family member leaves, it has to be deed restricted that they'll eliminate the unit. So, basically what they've done is they've made it just impossible that nobody ever does it because it doesn't make any sense to do it kind of the standards that they have. A lot of towns try to limit it to family members, but then it's an enforcement issue.
Right.
And what happens when that person sells the house and the next people move in and there's two dwelling units? And so...
Right.
You get into chasing your tail a lot on that kind of thing. So, you always have to assume that the worst case is going to happen. Pretend we're going to write in ordinance and make reality different. It doesn't happen.
Not to belabor this, turn it into a workshop. But we also have the height issue, right?
Right.
Which is very different here than in most...
We do allow taller garages than most places. And we've seen a couple that are, you know, they are pushing the limit of what we permit. So, they were permitted because our ordinance says, you know, say maximum height's 18 feet. They've got the 18-foot height limit. And 18 feet's to the midpoint between the eaves and the peak of the roof. So, it's not 18 feet to the peak of the roof. So, the peak of the roof could actually be 26 or 27 feet tall for a garage. That's very tall. So, that's all wrapped up in the same issue.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking that. Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
The Historical Commission did not have a meeting in August. We usually take the summer off. The next meeting will be in September. It's usually the first Wednesday of every month. And that would be the 3rd of September for this upcoming month. Please all join us.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, consideration of the 2015 to 2019 Library Services Agreement Extension between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the City of Huntington Woods.
Mayor, members of the commission, you have a memo, a staff report in your packet. I won't bury the lead. Staff is recommending that we renew our contract with Huntington Woods for a further five years. This would be the second renewal. We've been with Huntington Woods for library services for the past 10 years and have been very happy with them. But whenever a contract comes up for renewal, you have to do your due diligence on whether you're going to renew or go after bid. That's obviously always a question. So, when we started to do the analysis, and I'll hold this up for the audience to see, but...
Is that my beautiful cord?
Yeah, I can do it. You don't need to read the words, but this is cost per capita for library services. And this is Oakland County communities. There's about two-thirds where you can actually decipher their budget. Oh, sorry, I dropped the camera. You can actually decipher...
I don't look.
Yeah. You can decipher their budget, figure out how much they pay per capita for library services. And this is us right down here. So, we pay about $16 per person for library services. The next lowest in Oakland County is Oak Park. There, this dot right there, Diamond, I guess. They pay $26.90 per capita. So, you know, and then you see, it obviously goes right on up the staircase. I don't know if you can read that, but it might shock you to know that Birmingham pays the most per capita in Oakland County. We're getting a great deal on our library services, is what it comes down to. So, given that and given the fact that we've been very happy with our relationship with Huntington Woods, we are recommending renewal of the contract. There are some, you know, there are some further factors. Huntington Woods does give two spots on their library board to Pleasant Ridge residents. So, we are members of the library board there. Our residents do have a say in the governance of that library. And further, this is a situation where, you know, to be frank, we get to have our cake and eat it too. Because we know that about 60% of our users are residents with library cards, 60% of them use the Huntington Woods library and about 40% of them use the Ferndale library. Many use the Royal Oak library and the Southfield library, but those are the two major ones that people use, Ferndale and Huntington Woods. So, being members of the library network gives our residents privileges to use all of the libraries in the main network. So, you know, we can still choose to use whichever library we'd like, but our home library, we are recommending that we stay with Huntington Woods for all of those reasons. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or clarify any...
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I would just like to say that I want to appreciate or extend my appreciation to Jim and the staff for putting together the hard work on the Huntington Woods renewal. I think Jim has done a great job summarizing the reasons for staying with Huntington Woods and I think they're all very convincing. And there's something that we should, not only the commission, but the residents should consider. Having this as an agenda item tonight, I would ask that the public be allowed, over the course of the next 30 days, to weigh in on our city manager's recommendation for the library renewal. I know tonight was really the first time, I think publicly, that we've stated our intentions as far as library services. And I would just ask my colleagues to consider allowing 30 days for the residents of this community to weigh in on this contract renewal. It'll be a five-year commitment. I know there's, as Jim stated, there's many in this community who use Ferndale, who use other libraries within the library network. And although I'm very cognizant of the arguments made and I think they're, like I said, they're very convincing arguments for staying with Huntington Woods, I would just ask that we decide this next month and give ample time for residents, if they see fit, to either contact us individually as commission mayor and mayors or contact Jim directly with their views and have an opportunity at a public meeting to voice their opinions regarding the renewal. Like I said, I think Jim and the staff have done a great job in presenting this case and doing the due diligence, like you said. I guess my concern is only that the residents have an ample opportunity to weigh in. So, that would be my only concern on this issue.
Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyak, I appreciate that sentiment and I understand where it's coming from and I can appreciate the desire to get feedback from residents. The challenge I have is that the alternative is not described. So, to give residents an additional month to consider the alternative, we should provide them an alternative to consider. And in this case, we would need that alternative to come from Ferndale or other sources and those things don't exist. So, if we were going to wait a month, I would say we have to wait until we have alternatives. And I don't know that, secondly, I don't know that having those alternatives would result in a different decision from any of us or all of us. So, I would suggest that the remainder of us consider whether we would alter whatever we feel in our hearts for this decision based on waiting a month or four months. In my case, I would say, even giving the month of time, I do not know that the added feedback would change my opinion on this matter. And that is not to discredit any opinion that we might receive because we already have received feedback on this issue. In fact, someone spoke on it last month, I believe. So, I have a sense of where the community lands on this based on which libraries people use. And I don't know that the extra month will give us any additional information because we don't have a concrete alternative to compare against. And we get feedback that is heartfelt, but does not come from any place that we've given them an opportunity to respond to something of substance. That's my concern. So, we should, in my opinion, either decide tonight or decide to wait until we have more concrete information on another path. And my suggestion is we decide tonight.
I totally agree with your suggestion. I feel that that's... I think we've heard a lot of the discussion. We've entertained some of the discussion. People have spoken to this. We have a contract that's been developed between Huntington Woods and the City of Pleasant Ridge. It's, Huntington Woods is offering us the same, we're paying the same dollars that we're paying this year for the next year and then just a cost of living increase over the next four. The fact that we do have the two board seats, one of which we have to fill. We have one of our representatives here in the audience and one open position. I tend to agree that while I certainly appreciate all the comments and I want people to have an opportunity, I don't know what they will be commenting on outside of saying, I like this library, I like their services. Here we have something very substantive that we can vote on. And I would, my recommendation would be to go for the vote tonight as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment also. Touching on a couple of points that Commissioner Crzyak made, this is an agreement that we only look at every five years. So, I feel the residents really only get an opportunity. And yes, you can speak every month about the library that you choose and what you think about it. But really, you only get a chance to weigh in on this type of decision every five years. And that's quite a long period of time. So, the other part of it is that we have not initiated the discussion until tonight. Some discussion was initiated by Ferndale Library by reaching out to various residents to ask them to speak to the city commission. And I can appreciate that effort. But, you know, this is now something that we're putting, we have before us to decide on. We have the contractual language laid out here. We have the details. We have Jim's excellent presentation, which I feel is very compelling and I tend to agree with the conclusion there. But again, that's just me. So, now that we have all the information in front of us, I would feel more comfortable giving that extra month until the next meeting to allow residents to weigh in on this decision and look at the information and come back with feedback or not.
Mayor, we don't have all the information and that's the challenge. We do not have any idea whatsoever what a Ferndale library contract would cost us over the long term. No idea whatsoever. Nor do we know what services would be made available to us in any concrete fashion, which is by no means meant, again, as a discredit to the Ferndale Public Library or what it might become as a district library. It's a wonderful institution. It's that the whole plan hasn't been devised yet. And they have some time to get to that plan. And unfortunate thing is that our contract expires in a number of months. And as I said earlier, if we were going to delay, I would want to delay until we had concrete information, not a month. A month is arbitrary if we don't have concrete information. And we have no confirmation that that information would be available to us in that month of time. And even after having received that information, I'm led to think, and not just led to think, I believe and think, that we enjoy, we are incredibly fortunate to live in Pleasant Ridge and be surrounded by four nice libraries. We can walk within one and a half miles to four libraries. And there are a lot of communities that don't have that benefit. It so happens that the closest library to me is the Royal Oak Public Library because I live on the north side of Pleasant Ridge, by a few feet. So, yeah, Woodward, we're straight. Instead of diagonal, I think Ferndale would be closer. But, you know, having said all that, we enjoy a marvelous set of opportunities to go to the library in Pleasant Ridge. And we have a wonderful partner in Huntington Woods. And I don't think anyone here has discounted that. And I don't think I would learn anything in a month that would change that, given that we have gotten feedback from residents.
I guess I would just say that this is, I know there's been some discussion. I think I know that Jim has been very thorough in having discussions with both Ferndale, Huntington Woods, and other parties to decide and make his recommendations. And I think it's a fine recommendation. I guess my concern is not with the recommendation. It's not with the direction suggested by our city manager. I think, as he stated in his memo and eloquently tonight, that it's very advantageous for us to consider Huntington Woods as a partner for the next five years. I'm not here to dispute that finding. As, you know, like I said, I would probably, I would agree with the finding as far as, you know, the benefit to our community. But one of the things that I find valuable in any process, especially in this process and especially because, you know, I'm a fervent believer that the residents need to have an opportunity to weigh in on this. And I know a resident has spoke on this already, but, you know, we've really only declared our intentions this evening by a recommendation through our city manager. So, I would feel more comfortable approving the extension if we gave an opportunity to our neighbors and the residents of this community to contact us and give us their opinion and agreement that's going to last for the next five years. And I know there's been some discussion, what would that participation look like or what would we do to, you know, construct that participatory framework? I know it's a word that Jim and I have used and I really, I've really kind of made it a goal of mine, is when we have the opportunity to really solidify the participatory framework in this community. And I think this is an opportunity to do that, to say, yes, this is a decision before us this evening. And yes, you know, the arguments are very convincing. But have we given our neighbors and the residents of this community an opportunity to analyze the recommendation that was made tonight? I agree with you, Commissioner, that we're not providing an alternative. That's not, I guess, what I'm really advocating for. And I guess I'm not troubled by the lack of an alternative to the point that you are, granted. But I think having this on the table before us this evening for discussion and then revisiting this same question 30 days from now with an opportunity for the residents to weigh in, I think is, you know, part of building that participatory framework that, you know, I think we would all agree, you know, is healthy for this community.
I guess then I'm going to push back on what that participatory framework would be. I mean, we've heard people say it's very convenient to get on a bike and drive to Ferndale as opposed to Huntington Woods. Ferndale is much light brighter. It's a newer facility and a number of other things. What are we, and I'm fully expecting that feedback will say, it's easier for me to get on my bike and get to the Ferndale library or I happen to be downtown Ferndale and I can just stop in. It's much safer to bike there. The library is brighter and it has some programs that I like. After, at the end of that, what do we do with that? Is what I'm questioning because we have a... Is what I'm questioning, because we have a contract here, we have -- a lot of people have come to us, not a lot of people, but people have come to us in response to kind of Ferndale Library's push, but there's never been any discussion of the financial side of things or how that might work out, or the fact that the Ferndale Library is a library board of six people. It's not city-related, it's completely separate. There is no representation that Pleasant Ridge could ever have on that board as it stands now unless we become part of a district, whereas in Huntington Woods, we have that participation, two out of seven, I believe it is. And so it's those finer details that the public doesn't understand and will not react to. How much -- and so I'm wondering, how much information can we present them so that they actually have a larger picture when they're just saying, "I like that library"?
I agree with you entirely, Mayor, and part of why I'm, you know, so appreciative of the job that Jim has done on this issue is because I think he has synthesized our choice in a very convincing way. I think making his memo public and making it available to concerned residents, I think, would go a long way to identifying why the administration feels this is the direction we need to take on this. So I think Jim has already gone a long way towards, you know, making those arguments to stay with Huntington Woods, and I will just use this opportunity to say that Huntington Woods is a fabulous library. I have no qualms with Huntington Woods as our home library. One of the items for me that really convinces me that we should stay with them is the representation on the library board. I think it's very valuable that we, two of our residents, have an opportunity, you know, to sit on that board. That's not something that we're likely to ever have in Ferndale. So for me, that's a reason, a very convincing reason to stay with Huntington Woods. Being members of the library network, you know, it really allows us to have the best of all worlds, Royal Oak, Ferndale. My family also uses Southfield Library very frequently. I mean, I think we're very fortunate to live in this proximity of some really fantastic libraries, and my family, myself, we're strong advocates for library usage. My family regularly uses all these libraries. To me, it's not, and I guess this should be the distinction that I would want to leave people with, it's not Huntington Woods versus Ferndale, or not even an approval of this Huntington Woods contract. For me, it's, hey, this is an opportunity for us to open it up to citizens, to let them weigh in on this issue. If they can, in the 30 days, make an argument or convince us that Jim's recommendation is not the way to go, I would feel they would have to go a long way to do that. I think it's a very convincing argument. So for me, again, it's not that I disagree per se with Mr. Brookman's findings and Mr. Brookman's recommendations, I tend to agree with his findings. But for me, it's just the process and it's my position here on this governing body to say, "This is great, this is a great package with a nice bow on it. It'll still be a great package with a bow on it in a month." I would feel more comfortable deciding next month than I do currently, the reason being, simply I feel residents need an opportunity to weigh in on it. That's really where I stand.
I guess some things that I glossed over in the memo, you know, my thinking, putting forward this recommendation to you. Really, the key thing here is we have an issue of people prefer different libraries differently, but that's not really what should be guiding our decision here because of the library network. If we were going for library services and you only got to go to that library, then we're having a completely different conversation right now. We're probably doing a whole lot more work, you know, to really engage the residents and figure out which library we should be a part of, but that's not the situation. The situation is merely who is going to be our best partner as our home library, and to some extent then, you know, the push that Ferndale has been making is a money push. So the question is, if we bid this contract out, I can't see us having a whole lot of room to get a cheaper price. I mean, we might, but we might not have Huntington Woods or Ferndale as our lowest bid on that. So we open ourselves up to a whole lot of uncertainty in who the low bidder is going to be, you know, what the prices are going to come at, if we, you know, insult Huntington Woods and they come back $7,000 more expensive than we're paying now, and Ferndale, you know, figures that, hey, you know, we're somehow figures that out. So we open ourselves to a lot of risk by bidding on something where we are the low price. And we get all of the same benefits and rights and privileges, no matter who our home library is. And, you know, we can move our money from Huntington Woods to Ferndale because Ferndale is, you know, pushing for that, but we also then create a big budget problem for Huntington Woods because we're something like 10% of their library budget is our contract. So we would be hurting a partner that's been good to us for 10 years. So, you know, that is why I didn't feel like we should be bidding this out, why it would be advantageous for us to bid this out, because, you know, the drawbacks to that didn't necessarily match up with the benefits, you know, that we might reap. The risks outweigh, you know, the certainty of knowing we have a good partner at the best price. And we can go to the Ferndale Library today or in, you know, January of next year, all the same. So, you know, that was my thinking behind why we didn't take this out for more of a public process, why we didn't bid it out for competitive bidding, because the conversation we're having is a little bit different than the reality of the implications of the decision. You know, what library do you prefer? It's not the right conversation for this particular contract, just because of the way the library network works and the way everything fits together. So that was my thinking, and I just, you know, I didn't go too detailed into that, but given the tenor of the discussion, I think I figured it was private.
And I would argue, there are other things that we decide that we don't take to the public. Item number 10 is an example of that. There might be residents that say, you know, "It might be better to take that to the public so that we can decide, you know, how that decision is made." And this is one of these cases where I think we have enough information to make a decision. And interestingly enough, we don't have enough information to provide a good public comment. And that is the thing that I'm concerned with. That's why I say, if we were to wait, I would rather wait longer than a month if that's what it takes to have better information to provide the public on an alternative. The month feels arbitrary to me because I have no sense that we'll have an alternative for them in a month that answers what we predict to be their concern.
Right. But when we have a public hearing on, say, approval of the Recreation Master Plan, we don't have two Recreation Master Plans for the public to consider. We throw it out there and they're able to consider what we've put out there. I think if we put this out there, that would be the same as putting out a proposed master plan. Hey, this is our, let's say, this is our library master plan, this is what we plan to do with library services, and just put it out there for 30 days. And to me, I -- Jim, again, I think you're right about the conversation, and there's two different conversations here. I want to be in the conversation of, can we wait 30 days to decide this next month? Not the conversation of Huntington Woods or Ferndale.
There's no motion on the table. I don't know where those discussions coming from when there's no motion.
I totally agree with my father here. We both looked at each other and said, Robert's rules.
Never made the motion.
It was never a motion.
There's no motion on the table, there's a lot of discussion about nothing.
Someone should make a motion.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we postpone action on this issue and the renewal of library services with Huntington Woods until the next city commission meeting so we can allow for more public comment.
Second.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Kurzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
Mayor Metzger?
No.
On to the next thing. Okay, item, next item is item 10. Consideration of the Agreement Between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the Michigan Department of Transportation Regarding Maintenance of the Woodward Avenue Medians.
This is just a renewal of the status quo. Basically, MDOT will let you cut the grass in the medians and then pay you back for it. And this is renewing the contract that reduced the fact that we've been having Fireline do that work for us, and then they pay us. It's worked well, so we recommend this.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that the agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for maintenance of the Woodward Avenue medians, within its jurisdiction, be approved and that the city manager be authorized to execute the contract.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, consideration of the authorization of Police Sergeant, interim Police Chief Kevin Nowak to sign checks on behalf of the City of Pleasant Ridge.
This is a situation where the city administration and the city commission, both a member of each, signs checks, just to ensure that the checks are valid. And we've appointed three city commissioners, the mayor, Commissioner Perry, and Commissioner Kurzyak, that can sign on behalf of the city commission, and right now the city clerk, and in the past, it was the police chief who were authorized to sign on behalf of the administration. With police chief's retirement, we're proposing that interim chief Nowak be authorized to take up the mantle of signing the checks, if Amy can't do it.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Your honor, I move that Police Sergeant, interim Police Chief Kevin Nowak be authorized to sign checks on behalf of the City of Pleasant Ridge. Be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, may we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, consideration of the distribution draft of the City of Pleasant Ridge Master Plan.
Yes, we're making progress on the community master plan. The Planning Commission has reviewed the completed first draft of the plan, and in the adoption process for a master plan under the State Planning Enabling Statute, the city commission has to approve it to then go out for a 63-day comment period. This is where we basically say, you know, "We're comfortable with the first draft of this plan. We're not approving anything tonight," but it's to a point where we're comfortable with it to send it out for comment to all of our surrounding neighboring communities, the county, SEMCOG, some other organizations that they register with us, they'll get drafts for comment as well. That is a 63-day comment period that they have to get comments back to us. So we can continue working on the plan. We've had it on theridger.org, available, the complete draft for download and comment. You know, this plan, it's essentially a conservative plan. It's saying Pleasant Ridge's character is great, and we want to protect that, and then there's a few things where, you know, we're working around the edges. A lot of it's focused on, you know, improving our Woodward corridor. So that's the only place that really the forward motion, you know, in progress is called for, but certainly no, you know, six-story parking garage condo buildings or anything like that.
Have you seen the inside of VBS films?
And the Dog Park Revenge.
Yeah, right, exactly. So the next step is for you to approve the distribution draft. At that point, we can send it out and start the clock ticking. What happens after the 63-day period is over, the Planning Commission will review any comments that we get, and then the Planning Commission can decide to hold a public hearing. They can make any changes as a result of those comments they get, or they can say thank you, you know, or if the comments are not substantive, and that's usually the case, then they can proceed with the public hearing. And that begins the formal adoption process of the document. So there'll be a public hearing, and we can talk about ways that we handle that adoption process. One of the things that you need to do tonight, if you decide or even if you don't decide to approve the distribution draft, you also have a choice to make, and you need to pass a resolution asserting your right to also approve the plan ultimately. By statute, the approval authority rests with the Planning Commission, and then the legislative body can also decide to approve the plan. I always recommend that both bodies approve the plan, because it's always good to have everyone rowing in the same direction and having a stake and hand in the approval process. So if you do assert your right to approve, we can look at doing things like maybe even a joint Planning Commission and City Commission meeting, where you might both, the only agenda item might be considering the master plan so that you're all in the same room at the same time, and if there's any, you know, discussion points or changes you want to see at that point before we adopt it, you know, you can interact directly with the Planning Commission, rather than them doing their thing and then sending it here. It's, you know, it's nice, and plus, it's nice to all be in the same room, have kind of all celebration of a project coming to fruition, so we might look at doing that, just as a suggestion, if you do assert your right to approve the plan. So that's where we stand right now. You have two motions. One is the motion to approve the plan for distribution, and then the second motion is an optional one, should you choose to assert your right to approve the master plan following Planning Commission approval of the document, following a public hearing, following the comment period that we're starting today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just ask a quick question? So the process that was followed for the Recreation Master Plan was that Recreation Commission approved the draft, submitted it to the city commission, and the city commission approved or disapproved, which we approved it. So what we're saying tonight is we have a choice between doing that or just letting the Planning Commission go ahead and approve it without our...
Different enabling legislation?
Yep.
Basically, it's how that goes.
Okay.
You don't have the choice in the Recreation Plan process.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the distribution of the draft?
Your honor, I move that the Pleasant Ridge City Commission approve for distribution the draft of the master plan as presented at the Planning Commission meeting held Monday, July 15, 2014, as recommended.
Is there a second?
A second.
May we have a vote?
If we could discuss.
You want to discuss?
Yeah. Not to take any voting authority or approval authority away from the Planning Commission, but to Jim's point of all rowing in the same direction, I think it worked very well with the Recreation Master Plan, that the city commission then approved the plan that was previously approved by the Recreation Commission, and I would like to see that process here, and that's the process I would prefer, just to make sure that we're showing our endorsement of that great plan.
That's the second motion?
Yes.
We haven't gotten to that, we still have to approve the first one.
Don't we have to choose between the first and the second?
No, that's a second.
Very sorry.
It's an addition. Okay, we have, do we have a second? Yeah, we have a second. Can we have a vote on the first?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurzyak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries.
Now, the second item, do we have a motion to, for the city commission to assert its right to approve the master plan?
Your honor, I'm sorry. Your honor, I move that the Pleasant Ridge City Commission assert its right to approve the master plan following Plan, approve the master plan following Planning Commission approval of the document.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Can we have a vote on it, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item 13, consideration of the update regarding the citizen-initiated charter amendment petition.
Well, as you may or may not know, the commission knows, the public may know, we had a citizen-initiated petition to amend our city charter. This is by the Safer Coalition, they are the marijuana group that has been going around and doing citizen-driven initiatives to amend ordinances or city charters to basically override local ordinances dealing with marijuana or to put language in charters. We don't have any local ordinances dealing with marijuana, we just enforce the laws of the state. So they proposed for us a charter amendment that basically says that marijuana offenses shall be lowest law enforcement priority, and further that we provide a report every year on the number of marijuana-related arrests, and, you know, it's all kind of spelled out there. Ultimately, it's symbolic because it's talking about law enforcement priority. We don't have law enforcement priority list, and as a practical matter, when you look at all of the enforcement actions that we've had over the past three and a half years, marijuana falls way down at the end. And most of the time, it's a tag-along in conjunction with a traffic stop or, you know, something else that happens, so we're not out there doing marijuana stings, you know, things like that. That's not how we're spending our police time. So, I don't know if...
I don't know, it looks pretty malaback.
I don't know if...
Yes. What do you want?
So, you know, it's interesting because by state law, a charter amendment only requires 5% of the voting populace to approve. An ordinance amendment is actually government... An ordinance amendment is actually governed by our city charter, and that requires 15%. So, this group went with the lower bar and collected the required signatures and had a charter amendment. Part of the charter amendment process is we send the language up to the state, because they write the ballot language, they write the, you know, the charter amendment, they write all of that, and then we just basically, you know, up or down it if they get the required signatures. We don't influence that or approve the language or anything. It's done, it's approved by the residents. But, the Home Rule Act does require a couple of things to happen, and at this point, I think I'm gonna let Greg take the baton and run with this, with kind of what happens when it goes to the state and where we've been, kind of what they've said to us.
Sure. The Home Rule Cities Act has two provisions. One is that the charter amendment go to the governor's office, and the second, that the certain language go to the attorney general's office to determine whether or not it's consistent with the statements in the Home Rule Cities Act. We have not yet received, to my knowledge, any report from the governor at this point, but the statute makes that relatively meaningless, because in the case of a citizen-initiated charter amendment, even if the governor were to disapprove it, it still must go on the ballot. So, even though we haven't received that yet, that really doesn't matter. The statute also requires that the attorney general approve the certain language within the proposal, the statement of purpose. And in this case, the attorney general has disapproved that language, indicating that attorney general does not believe it is consistent with the standards in the Home Rule Cities Act. The statute unfortunately is not very clear as to what happens when the attorney general disapproves language. So, I believe the administration is determined that it should be put on the ballot. There is no case law that determine one way or the other whether it should or shouldn't. There is no even advisory attorney general's opinion as to what would happen. If the city were to refuse to put it on the ballot, then you would be subject potentially to litigation, and given the fact that this charter amendment is largely, if not entirely symbolic, the determination was made that it really should go on the ballot, notwithstanding the attorney general's letter of disapproval. I did speak with the author of that letter, and he indicated that, yes, they would prefer it not go on the ballot, however, they are aware that cities in similar situations have put issues on the ballot, even though their office has disapproved the actual language. So, that is basically hidden on that show.
And Huntington Woods, right now, is in the exact same boat as we are, because they had a charter amendment petition there. They got basically the same letter from the attorney general, but they're going forward and putting it on the ballot as well. It says, "Symbolic, risk for litigation, clarify case law over something that's symbolic."
Because as the memo noted, you can't add a provision in the city charter that overrides state law anyway. So, to the extent that this amendment would require the police department to do something inconsistent with state law, it would not be effective. Hence, the determination that's really more symbolic than anything else.
Any questions?
I have a question. This is something that Jim and I emailed about. I just wondered if you had learned anything more about whether or not there's anything we can do to help kind of close this thing that can be translated or looked at as a loophole? If we're gonna go ahead and put this on our ballot because of the risk of litigation and all, then it's just not worth it. Is there anything we can do to help facilitate a closure of this loophole, so additional communities in the future aren't faced with the same decision and have to kind of go down the same path and kind of keep slipping through?
Yeah, Greg, help me out here. I think really the avenues for that are testing in court, or an advisory attorney general's opinion, which would help clarify it, or get our state legislators to amend the Home Rule Cities Act to make the language clearer. None of those options are particularly high on my list of priorities, you know, what I think I would be wanting to spend time on, just because those are all kind of way over our pay grade here. That's just my opinion on that. And Greg, I don't know if you would...
I would concur. I mean, certainly, if you contact your legislator and indicate that we do have this inconsistency in the statute, perhaps they should take a look at it, and that'd probably be the best approach.
Is this something that's acknowledged as a deficiency, as far as you know?
Well, it's acknowledged to the extent that the attorney general can't exactly say what happens when they disapprove language, so I think there is an awareness that there's an issue there. But, the issue has not yet been tested in court, so there's no precedent, no appellate precedents that would guide us. And the attorney general has not been asked for a formal opinion, and even there, it would be advisory, and attorney general's opinion is binding on the state and state agencies, but not necessarily on local municipalities.
Thank you. I'll probably contact you later, so I can send it out.
Okay.
My question is, if it does go on the ballot, it is passed by the people of Pleasant Ridge, and someone has medical marijuana and is picked up for it in their car, is there any legal recourse for that person because it's in our, it's been passed here? Or is that just completely, do you see what I mean? I mean, could there be, could they bring a case and say, "Wait a minute, in Pleasant Ridge, this has been passed, that I'm able to carry a certain amount of marijuana on me?" That's just from a commoner's point of view.
The proposal would not change state law and can't change state law. Marijuana is still prohibited, except for the exception for medicinal marijuana, but otherwise, it is prohibited. This was not changed, I think.
I'm not a lawyer, and I don't even play one in front of you. Betty Howe, 31 Cambridge. I think your issue about the attorney general ignores one thing, and that is that we have an attorney general who has a certain opinion on a lot of things, who's running for reelection right now. And I can say this better than probably you can. So, that I think closing doors on actions that you may actually find helpful in the future isn't the best idea on earth. As an enthusiastic politician from time to time, anything that'll get more people to the polls is always a good thing for me. I just wish it had been for the primary, and maybe the results might have been a little different. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one more comment on this. Just my own opinion of it, is that, you know, the path of lesser effort is the path that was chosen here, and I think I can understand why. 137 signatures, I think it was, were submitted, 118 required, versus 352, which is quite a bit more effort. Pleasant Ridge and Huntington Woods were the cities that were last on the list, so the clock was ticking, the deadline was approaching, and I think they just did whatever was easiest to get this on the ballot. So, I can understand why that was done, but at the same time, I look at what is being proposed, and it's adding something to our charter, which is our flagship document, and it's saying how, really, to me, it's communicating that marijuana is very important to Pleasant Ridge. It's kind of what that says to me. And I'm not really sure that that's a message we want to be sending out. So, personally, I'm not really in favor of this form that has been selected here. I really wish they had put forth the additional effort to ask us to, or propose the creation of an ordinance, because that's a little bit different than the charter. The charter is this foundational document, you know? To me, it's like the constitution of the city. And to add something in this, all this complicated verbiage dedicated to marijuana just does not seem appropriate to me. But, it's not up to me. It's up to the voters to decide, and, you know, this will be on the ballot. And in the end, it's gonna be up to the voters to decide, do they support this symbolic measure, and do they support it in the form that has been proposed, in our charter? So, I think it'll be interesting to see how it turns out. I just wanted to share my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thanks.
No action necessary on this one.
No, right. Okay, the next item is the city management.
Yeah, we talked about most of the, just through the planning commission report, and the, you know, the storm. The other thing I would double back on is that we do have a library board vacancy, and if we stay with Huntington Woods, we will need to fill in, we had unfortunate passing for one of our library board representatives. So, anyone watching on TV, any resident, we do have our application for boards and commissions on the homepage of the website, down at the bottom. There is a checkbox on there for Huntington Woods Library Board, so get that to us. We need, we need someone who is interested and willing in serving at the library board. And I would anticipate that we would, we'll keep that open. It's been open, but we are officially notifying now, and should the contract be approved again, then we'll fill it.
Mayor, there's nothing preventing us from filling it, even if we don't, although the term would be short.
Right, the term would be until December 31st, so.
So, don't delay applying if you're interested.
I would add, I'm sorry, one last thing, the alley project. We are proceeding with that, just in terms of scheduling and timing on that. The DDA did approve the expenditure to do the work to approve the alley between 696 and Demetshider. Our city engineer is preparing the design plans for that right now. We hope to bring something back to the DDA in August, and then hopefully bring that to you for approval for the, for the letting of the bids in September. In the past, the alleys have been done as an add-on to the street contract, but nowadays, the street contractors, those that are left, are very busy. And so, Delicio, who's doing our Cambridge project, can't, you know, they've got a million, multimillion-dollar project, I think, in Troy, waiting for them when they get done with this, so our $60,000 alley is not hugely appetizing for them. So, we are gonna have to send this out to bids to see if somebody can do it this fall. Because I'm sure if we're gonna get it done this fall now, because we have to send this out to bids. If we don't, then, you know, we're gonna get it done. It might just be we'll bid it out for the spring, and we might look at some other options, but it'll get done. But, I can't promise it's gonna be fall anymore. We'll see.
So, the hope for coordination with the parking lots and everything, just isn't...
I think as construction projects go, as they get deeper into the project, the costs rise, and so I think they're scaling back their parking lot.
Concept?
Concept. The trees and the landscaping to buffer the alley are still on the table. That hasn't gone away. We can't make them do that, but, you know, they're still planning on doing that, so we're working with them. And we put them in contact with our city engineer, party to party, so if they want to work together on that, but we're not gonna play passive, you know, for coordinating their, whatever they need to do for their parking lot, because they have to leave that out on their own.
The last item, other business. Does anybody have anything to bring?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple things. I just wanted to, Jim had mentioned the Cambridge project, just kind of wanted to give everybody an update, so we'll see some flurry of activity here in the next couple of weeks. So, Cambridge stood up to the storm pretty well. It was surprising, you know, because it's all poured up right now. So, they were out there grading this morning, and they'll be setting forms for the paving machine. I believe they started putting them in today, depending on how hard the ground was for them to put them in, and they plan to pave the first half of Cambridge, which is from Ridge Road to about house number 130 on Friday. So, on Friday, there'll be about 50 concrete trucks will be coming in and out of the city throughout the day to get that pour done. It's 2,500 square yards of concrete.
The dream pour.
It's a lot. It's a lot. It's a lot of concrete.
This Friday?
Yeah, on Friday, as long as weather, you know, withstands. So, they will be coming from, they'll be coming from the Maplefield end and up, because if they came from Ridge Road, we would have to close Ridge Road for that, because the concrete has to keep coming as the machines pour, so. After they finish that, they'll, the concrete will cure, and they'll begin on the sidewalks and driveways of that section, and then move on to the other half. So, Cambridge is progressing. One other thing is the city's representative, the SACRA, we have, we had a small recycling report, and we, our recycling for the year was very good, and we saw a benefit of around $17,000 for recycling instead of just putting it in a landfill. And we were the second highest of the SACRA communities, that number as a benefit of the percent of recycling cost, of what we get. Huntington Woods is historically number one on that list. They, their benefit of percent of recycling was 116, Huntington Woods is 116.4%. We were in second place at 66.3%, so.
Wow.
They have a large advantage on people for that, but I'm glad that we are, you know, we're up there on our recycling percentages, so keep recycling those goods. And that's it.
Could I add something regarding SACRA? SAC, yeah, SACRA. I was over in, on the west side of the state this weekend, and they have the large garbage cans, like the Chingali ones that we all look at, that, I forget how many gallons.
92 gallons?
92 gallons. They actually have, you know, and this was, this is the only city, I think, in Michigan that has actually come out of the being under emergency manager guidance or whatever themselves. But, so it's interesting, they have these trash cans, but they have sponsorship all over the top of the trash cans. They have probably like 16 or 20 different sponsors, isn't it?
That's kind of like NASCAR's?
Three of them. Because I know a lot of residents with the whole, the rodent thing and things like that, you know, we've had lots of discussions with that. We've had discussions of, you know, do we do a special, you know, assessment and, you know, have everyone get those cans, or, you know, and I don't know if that just becomes a heavy burden for administration to try and sell all that advertising, or something. I have pictures. I will send you a photo.
Well, you know...
But, it's actually, it's the weirdest thing, because it is pizza places and things like that, you know, versus like...
We keep going with marijuana.
If you have a picture of one of those cans, Anne, I'd be...
I've got a picture.
Because I've never seen advertisements on them.
I don't know, I mean, do they, they...
I can find actual issues. We run through SACRA.
Yeah, because SACRA is technically the contractor for our rubbish collection.
Sure.
So, we'd have to, that's a larger issue. But, on a side note to that, and this sounds crazy, but the technology for rubbish collection is really grown in the last couple of years, and they're test piloting out in, out of Macomb County, RFID chips on your garbage cans, which is a radio frequency identifier. So, there's an app for your phone that can tell you, "Hey, the garbage truck just hit this street. They'll be on your street." Within the hour, and they say, you know, they tell you, they know exactly when your trash was picked up with this chip, because people are like, "Well, I hit, I took my garbage out and it didn't get picked up." It's like, "Well, they picked up at your house at..."
Three minutes earlier.
Yeah, so, and those are embedded right into the cans. So, I mean, the cities have found that their, their collection rates have gone way up, because they don't have the person dragging it out after the truck goes by, or something like that. So, you know, as the SACRA contract comes up, I think that's one of the things that they're gonna be looking at for the garbage companies to start to do that, because it's really, I mean, it's the big brother in it, but if, think about it, you could track exactly where the garbage trucks are. Yeah, the mailman, they have their standard points, so, I don't know, I've never seen the advertisements. That is very interesting.
If the village fails in November, it might double back.
I can't believe the advertisers would want baby diapers being thrown in their name on the can.
Unless you're a baby diaper maker.
Yeah, still, it's, you know, not...
Very strange.
The nicest restaurants in that town advertise on the wood of these trash cans.
Yeah, but where are you, Seagull?
Free Oaks.
Oh.
They were one of the first cities to have, I think, remain.
Yeah.
It was really, they were one of the test cases.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Scott.
Yes.
Do you know if SACRA is any closer to considering or getting to the point of using single-stream recycling?
At this point, I say no, because there is a, there is a large infrastructure improvement that needs to be made to the facility to do that. It's disordered, the way they resort through everything. Right now, Huntington Woods, they actually take, they have the single stream, they pay, they pay additional per household for that, and they take it to a different, a different site to do that. So, it's, at this time, I know it's on the radar, but the cost to retrofit the Madison Heights facility and Detroit facility is great. It's very high to do that, so. Eventually, it will take place, because that's the future. I mean, if you can throw all your stuff in one bin, like the big bins like we have at the community center, and it just, you recycle way, way more. Drive through Huntington Woods on one of their garbage days, you'll see very few rubbish for the landfill, very few of those cans, everything's recycled. So, I know it is one of the things they're talking about, though, so I can get an update.
Okay.
Thank you. Give you a better answer. Anything else?
Thank you for the emails and rap about Cambridge. They're very helpful.
Oh, yes, yeah, it's, Cambridge has been, been Cambridge. It's a construction project, so a lot of underground work that needs to be done, and it's, now, like I said, now you'll see it. it's, now, like I said, now you'll see it really progressing. And the people on the street have been, have been great. I mean, very understanding, and just, you know, disrupts your life.
Right.
So, they've been, they've been really cooperative, and we appreciate that, so.
I know yesterday was a tough day for them with all the rain, like, getting home and walking.
Yeah, it was tough, but...
But, they were grateful that their basins were...
Yeah, Cambridge held the water, but most streets, I mean, it was, because, because their roads, it's all been, it's all sand, so.
Of course.
It was very interesting, and Jim said the same thing, he drove by this morning, and I mean, they were grading the street, taking shovelfuls of dirt out, and it was, it wasn't like muddy, it wasn't like everything else we saw here, so it's the sandy soil that we have here in Pleasant Ridge, and we thank for that, so.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other? Just one date to remind you, you heard a lot of other dates, but two weeks from tonight, we will have coffee with commissioners. Last month was a lot of fun, and I expect this one will be too, so I encourage people to attend. Okay. If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Your honor, I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.